The invocation. Let us pray. Dear Father, again, we do come before you, dear Lord, just asking for your guidance and direction as we go into our meeting tonight, dear Lord. We just pray that you be with us and guide and direct us in everything that we say and do with me to your honor and your glory. And also, dear Lord, we just pray for people out in the county and all over the South Carolina and in the nation, dear Lord, suffering from this heat wave we're going through. So we just left that situation up to you, and we just pray that everybody will be safe during this time. So God direct us that we continue this meeting, and we just pray all this in the name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
All righty. We do have a quorum tonight. It's three of us here, and they will have Ms. Mosley's online virtually tonight, so it's four of the forums. So several of our council members had other things come up that they couldn't be here tonight. So that's why we're sort of looking slim up here at the desk tonight. So, all right, we've got the Fledge of Allegiance, and that, so we'll go into the approval of minutes for June the 3rd, 2024 council meeting.
I move that we approve the June 3rd minutes.
Second.
Second. Got a motion in second. Any comments, changes, alterations? Hear none? All in favor, raise your right hand and say aye?
Aye.
Unanimous vote there. All right, done. The citizens' comments. We don't have any per se for citizens' comments, so we'll move right along into the public hearing. So what I'm gonna do, I'm gonna go ahead and open up the public hearing, and we'll, I'll read each A, it's A, B, and C to it, and each A, A, B, and C, we'll ask for any comments on those, and then we'll close the public hearing, so.
Mr. Brown?
Yes, sir.
I think Mr. Sudemire wanted to comment.
I thought he was on the public hearing.
He's in the public hearing? Okay, I'm sorry. I wasn't aware of that.
Oh, you did?
Yes, sir.
Oh, okay. Well, that's got you. You had him sign in on the pub. So we'll back up here then and have it on the citizens' comments.
I just wanted to make quick comment. Last week, I attended my 32nd year of Palmetto Boys State. Mr. Hester was so gracious to let me attend. And this year, I was representing Chester County. So, thousand and forty boys, the largest boys state in the country. And I'm telling you, it was a heck of a week, and we had some great delegates. And I just wanted to read real quickly the delegates from Chester County. From Chester High School, we had Victor Floyd Jr., Trevon Worthy, Gabriel Pendergrass. From Great Falls, we had Ezekiel Bakke Nakki, and Hunter Self. From Lewisville, we had Maquil Crane and Gavin Reynolds. And from Hawthorne, we had Thomas Clinton. And this is a Chester County boy, Nick Atkinson. He goes to a private school. And the director at Girl State sent me the list of the Girl Staters that went. And from Chester High School, we had LaMyra McCree and Brianna Woodard. From Great Falls, we had Kinsley Price. And from Lewisville High School, we had Josie Lancaster. And so throughout the week, they ran for city government, city council, then county government, county council. So they learned, some of them ran for county council, and then we did the state. And the week culminated with both delegations going to Columbia, marching down Main Street, and then getting addressed by the governor. So it's a great place, great leadership, and I'm just very proud of our Chester County delegates. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sudemire. I apologize for that, there. All right, that will go upon the citizens' comments, and then we'll, like I say, we'll move to number five on the agenda, which is the public hearing, and I'll declare the public hearing open at this time. And like I say, as I read each, all, each subject off, I'll ask for comments on it. Okay? All right, this is the, on the A, is the third reading of 2024-11 Chester County Fiscal Year 2024-2025 Budget Ordinance to Establish Operating and Capital Budgets for the Operation of the County Government of Chester County, South Carolina, for the fiscal year commencing July the 1st, 2024, to provide the levy of taxes of Chester County for the fiscal year commenced in July the 1st, 2024, to provide for the expenditure of taxes, revenues, and other county funds, to provide for other county purposes, to authorize the county to borrow money in anticipation of taxes, and to provide for the payment of the sums borrowed by the county governing body, to provide for the payment of tort claims, working compensation claims against Chester County, to provide for certain fiscal and other matters relating to the county government. Does it have anybody that would like to speak on that? Hear none? We'll move along to B under this public hearing, would be the third reading of 2024-12, the ordinance amending and restating ordinance of number 2016, enactment of April the 18th, 2016, and operizing the insurance of general obligations funds in one or more series, tax exemption or taxable in the amount not to exceed the lesser of the annual aggregate of $2,500,000, and two, the availability debt limit of the county for the purpose of acquiring, constructing, equipping, rehabilitating various capital projects, authorizing the county administrator to prescribe the form of details for the bonds, providing for the payment of the bonds and the disposition of the proceeds of the bonds, providing for borrowing in anticipation of the insurance of bonds and other related matters. Does anybody like to speak on that? Hear none? We'll move right along to C, under five, which would be the third reading of 2024-13, an ordinance revoking resolution number 2023-29, declaring a pause to further residence subdivisions or planned developments in limited areas of the county, invoking depending ordinance doctrine, and providing for other related matters. Would anybody like to speak on that? Hear no speakers? I declare the public hearing officially over on that. All right, moving along to number six on the agenda, which is the consent agenda, which we have A, B, and C on. I have a motion on consent agenda on these three items.
I move we approve the, all the items on the consent agenda.
Second.
Second.
All right, got a motion in second. Any comment or questions?
Can we have some discussion on consent agenda, on a specific one? Is that okay?
Yes, sir.
So the second one there, with the pause to further residential subdivisions or planned developments. Mr. Hester, would you mind speaking to that one more time, since this is the third reading? I believe it does extend it for an additional three months, and if there is a specific area, the Lewisville attendance zone that this really affects? Is there anything else to add to that?
Well, I'll just kind of restate what I've stated in the past is, and there was a, you know, I did have a question from a citizen this past week, which was a really good question concerning, is there a lapse in the resolution and the ordinance? This is actually passing of an ordinance, and this is, this ordinance actually revokes the resolution that was initially put a pause on any planned developments or subdivisions within a limited area, and that limited area really boils down to Lewisville School District. Anything that was not already, had been approved and started, and when I say started, that had been rezoned and development agreements were in place, were already approved, were excluded from that. Anything new would not. This ordinance just replaces, so it revokes the resolution. So the minute this vote takes place, the resolution is no longer, and the ordinance is in place. Resolution is simply more of a policy and procedure the county follows, whereas an ordinance is like a law. It has a little more teeth and legality to it. And so that was the intention. And then we also extended it for three months, and the reason behind that was not to create a moratorium, but to allow sufficient time for us to hire the planner, and to get the planner in, for that planner to have workshops with council, and for council and citizen input, or council with community input, to be able to determine what going forward these developments would look like, where they should go, how they should look, what buffers, what setbacks, and to make a lot of decisions that need to be made. And so that's really the gist of this. And I will say, as a follow-up to that, that our planner position has been posted, and I've gotten a couple of applications thus far. That position, the posting for that should close at the end of this coming week, and we'll start the interview process. So the goal is to get that person in here as quickly as possible, and to get back moving forward with those workshops.
Right. Any further, we did get a second on that. Okay. Any further questions on that?
I'll just kind of echo kind of what Mr. Hester just said. And, you know, I think this is a good thing to allow, we're spending the money and the resources for a planner. We need to give that person opportunity to make a difference, and this will give them the time they will need to do that. And so I think it's a smart move, and look forward to seeing what recommendations they bring. And, you know, we're, it's a hard job, and we genuinely want to do it the right way. And so I think this is a good step the county's taking to help us achieve that goal.
Absolutely. And, you know, I just returned from a conference with city and county managers, and not unlike any other county or city in this state, they're all experiencing, for the most part, the same thing. And so I think we're really being proactive with where we are and hiring this position. We're adding three months to this as well, so this gives us till March 31st, and council has the ability to extend that if we feel it's needed as well at that point in time.
I would, I would actually say we might be seeing more of it than others, because we do have so much going in our favor right now.
Right.
They're seeing, not just our proximity to Rock Hill and Charlotte, but there's a lot of good things about Chester County.
We're very sought after, for sure.
As people figure that out, we're gonna, we're gonna have some growth.
All right. Hear no further discussion? We got a motion in second. All, the vote on the consent of A, B, and C, raise your right hand and say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous vote on that. Thank you. All right, number seven on the agenda is ordinance resolutions and proclamations. This, under A, is the third reading of 2024-11 Chester County Physical Year 2024-2025 Budget Ordinance to Establish Operating and Capital Budgets for the Operation of the County Government of Chester County, South Carolina, for the fiscal year commenced in July the 1st, 2024, to provide for the levy of taxes for Chester County for the fiscal year commenced in July the 1st, 2024, to provide for the expenditure of tax revenues and other county funds, to provide for other county purposes, and to authorize the county to borrow money in anticipation of taxes, and to provide for the payment of sums borrowed by the county governing body, to provide for the payment of tort claims, working compensation claims against Chester County, and to provide for certain fiscal and other matters relating to the county government. Need a motion on that.
I move that we approve the third reading of 2024-11.
Second.
Second. Got a motion in the second. Any discussion or questions?
Mr. Chair, if I may, being this is the third reading of our budget, I'd like to ask Mr. Darby to come forward and just highlight a few points for the public, as well as council, to reiterate a few things with regard to this budget.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So I guess tonight is the culmination of many long months that we've worked on this budget. I think we started in January, and so, you know, roughly five months that we worked putting this together. Just want to thank council, thank Mr. Hester, all the county leaders. You know, it's a lot of work, many meetings, many hours putting this together. But I think, I think the important thing from this budget is there's no tax increase to the citizens. I think all the departments and county leaders worked really hard to put a budget before council that had, you know, no increased impact to the citizens. So that's, that's kind of the most important key, I think, of this budget. Just to highlight a few things from the, from the budget, I guess, numbers-wise, overall budget for fiscal year 2425 is just shy of $60 million, so $59,602,793. Of that total appropriation, $34,406,432 is from the county general fund. Some things that make up those general fund expenditures, we had 4% cost of living adjustment for county employees, all county employees, full-time county employees. We had some new positions and reclassifications within the budget. We also had catch-up from our raises that were given in January, so that was part of the increase in the general fund budget. Request-wise, kind of goes back to, you know, all the work that was put in on the budget. We had requests for the general fund of over $46 million, and so we had to get that number down to about $34 million. So, you know, that was where all the meetings came in, and the, you know, the decisions that had to be made to get that number back down. But that's, that's where we were, $34,406,432 is kind of where that number came in at. From a revenue standpoint, you know, our increased revenue from our value of mill from our, you know, what the taxes are bringing in increased, that brought in an extra $1.4 million. So that value has helped us keep that level millage. We also have an increase in our fee in lieu of tax revenue, and we've seen an interest earnings increase from prior year also. So those are kind of the important things from a revenue side. I guess we had a workshop back on April 30th, and some of the highlights from that workshop, from an expenditure standpoint, we talked a few, you know, about the cost of living. We have a leadership certificate program that's built into the expenditure budget, and that's in the human resource budget, an urgent care benefit for county employees. We saw an increase, a little bit of an increase in our building inspection cost. We've got an increase, the county's implementing a new HR payroll software, so that was an increase in the IT budget. We had to pick up $300,000 from the COPS grant. Those are grants that we have an obligation on the last year of the grant to pick up that, pick up that cost, so that's in there. We're funding Great Falls fire staff, so that, that's a cost that we have in the, in the budget, and it's offset by an allocation of $175,000 from the town of Great Falls. Rural Fire, we had a 3% adjustment to allocations, and then we also have built in a day shift of EMS at the Westchester substation. That's kind of the highlights. If council has any questions from that, that's kind of an overall view.
Don't have any questions, Mr. Darby, but I'd like to say thank you and Mr. Hester for the hard work that y'all put in. I know we were involved in some of it there, but to do all that and to come up with no tax increase for the people of Chester County is an admirable job, and we thank you for your working, hard work on this.
I have a little comment. This budget significantly increased the fire protection and general safety of the citizens of Chester County, and again, without taxes going on. I really appreciate that.
All righty. Any further comments or questions? We got a motion in the second, is that right?
That's right.
All in favor, raise your right hand and say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous vote there. Mosley voted there too. So moving along to under seven, under B, resolution for 2024-7, identifying the capital projects as part of a program of general obligations borrowing for the calendar year 2024, updating the list of capital projects related to the prior general obligation bar of our calendar year 2017 through 2023, and providing for other related matters. Need a motion on that.
I move council approve resolution 2024-7.
Second.
Second.
Second. Got a motion in the second. Any comments or questions on that?
I guess we'd ask maybe, can we ask Mr. Hester to speak to it?
So.
You can, if you'd like.
So that resolution is, as is every year, at the end of the budget, on the third reading of the budget, this is our bond for capital. And so this will provide the capital as it does, or it has for the past many years. This is approximately $1.6 million. I'm looking to see what page that's on. It looks like. I do not see which page, but it's, it's within your packets, roughly $1.6 million. Again, roughly the same as last year's capital borrowing. And then this, this resolution also includes a cleanup for, I think, four of the past years, Tommy? Is that correct? 2019? Back to 2017. So there's some years where, let's, and I'll give you an easy example of how that is. If, just say there was $1,000 out there of capital for a chair, or, you know, chairs for council chambers, let's say, and we only spent $965, and there's $45 that was borrowed that's hanging out there that was not able to be used for anything else. And so that money can be carried over each year in case there's something wasn't expended within that request. And so what we've done is we've gone back and we've cleaned up leftover monies that were out there. I think they totaled roughly $301,000. Mr. Darby, is that correct? And a little bit of that was actually from last year. And so our goal is to not let that money linger out there when we borrow it. That there's leftover money through the fact that an item's price was less than what was budgeted, then we'll clean that money up to the end of the year, and then repurpose it into that budget. So when I say 1.6, we're roughly at 1.9 in capital this year, and $301,000 of that is from the past seven years, roughly, of cleanup money from those years that we did not use. So hopefully that explains it as short and simple as we can.
So I do, I do have a couple of questions. Three of the categories, the sheriff's office regarding the flock cameras, also the solid waste, and also the gateway. Starting with the sheriff's office, the flock cameras. So this is a one-time purchase? Is there a contract that comes with it? Can you just talk through what that is? And I know we already have invested a good bit in those cameras. Is this going to add more cameras? What does it do?
So that's a good question. That is not additional cameras. Because those cameras are considered a lease, we pay that, we have to pay that money every year to continue to use those cameras. So it's not a one and done. And so this is the cameras that council approved. There were, two years ago, council approved an amount of cameras, and then last year, there was an additional amount of cameras that got us to that $84,000. And so that is included in our capital each year because of the fact that it's a lease.
And it's perfectly, it's perfectly okay to do it through this capital program as opposed to an operational deal?
Yes, sir. It is. Mr. Darby and I have discussed that in length as well, and just due to the nature of the fact we're leasing, we're leasing a product through that, that we are comfortable through our audit and our CPA firm as well, that we are doing the right thing.
Would you mind also speaking to the solid waste collection? I see we have a truck and some other equipment there. I think that's a change in technique there.
So, again, our, our goal is due to the, we've kind of gotten to the point as a county where our contractual relationships for certain things, and one is our recycling. The cost of that contract really outweighs the cost of us doing it ourself, even though there's a little bit of initial capital upfront. But if you take that specific, our recycling, what we're gonna do with that capital is purchase six compactors and five roll-offs to put at our individual recycling center sites. And we're, instead of renting those pieces of equipment, we're gonna hire a driver and buy a truck to basically transport our own recyclables to Sunoco where they go. In turn, we'd be saving the county in the first year over $157,000, and subsequent years, it actually could be more than that. But that 157, if you took the total cost of what we're paying for the transportation, or I'm sorry, if you take the total cost of the truck and what we're expending on the compactors, and you took that savings, we pay for this, we pay for the program we're going to within three years. And so that's a pretty good return on our.
This will be done with existing staff, or we're gonna need to add additional staff?
So this would be an additional staff that we will hire. We won't hire, we're under contract until November 30th, so the numbers you look at here all start November 30th. Well, actually, the staff is figured into the general fund budget. But we won't make these purchases until around October, November of this year. That staff member would be hired to start, and whenever this contract is up, November 30th. And then they're gonna perform, they're gonna perform some other functions at the landfill in the meantime, because I don't think that the recycling, especially now that we're gonna put compactors as opposed to roll-offs at all the site, our heaviest-use sites, we're putting compactors, will really cut down on the amount of trips that those recycling containers are taking to Sunoco. So we're gonna utilize that person at the landfill where we need some additional help currently. And then our plan is, as we discussed in some of those workshops, is to potentially continue to buy more of our own compactors and to transport more of our own waste from our recycle centers, whether it be MSW, whether it be recyclables, but to do more of the transport ourself, and again, save ourself a substantial amount of money as we go forward in the future.
Right.
Was there one more?
One more, the gateway.
The gateway.
To the gateway, yeah.
So, let me try to speak to the gateway is, do you have a specific question on it, or while we, so there's some changes in the gateway, and we actually took, made itself, Tommy, say this right up, we fully funded the gateway fund. It pays for all of its expenses in this year's budget, whereas we had some of those expenses allocated in past year's budgets. So it wasn't, we won't call it fully supportive. Mr. Sudemire and his staff have done a fantastic job of marketing and rentals, and we're on track to have a record year with the Gateway Center, and we are booked for a lot of next year. And we, based on the numbers and projections, we think that the Gateway Center can fully self-support itself. Mr. Darby and I pulled the utilities out for next year, but it may make its own utilities. And if you want to comment on that as well?
So I was actually just talking about HVAC replacement.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Took it in a different direction.
Wanted to hear that story.
Yeah.
So the HVAC replacement, these are four or five?
Five.
So these would be the last, there's five small HVAC systems that are still, were part of the original building. This will be the, after these five, they will all be replaced. And so, sorry, I thought you.
No, that's what I wanted to hear, because we've done HVAC replacements several times. And so if this is the last one, that's, that's.
These are the last of our HVACs out there that need to be replaced. Mr. Hall and Mr. Sudemire back there shaking their heads, you can see. And they asked to get these done because these are starting to cost us a little bit as well. And we're, in this budget, we're also replacing in the capital, if you see the War Memorial, is it the courthouse or the War Memorial? We're the final HVAC that we budgeted. War Memorial. And it's one that we have to actually have a crane to lift it, to get it on top of the roof. But that one will be the last one that needs to be replaced there as well.
Mr. Hester, if you could, would you speak to? Mr. Hester, if you could, would you speak to the projects we have in the Great Falls Fire District and the things we're going to be doing down there?
So we are putting a full-time, we have a fire station, a county-owned fire station, county-owned equipment. And we are putting a full-time, we already have full-time EMS staff that's stationed out of that building and we're adding full-time fire. So there will be two firefighters, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year. There will be three firefighters for the daytime, normal weekday operation. There'll be a captain who will be sort of the administrative person in charge of that station, who will respond as well as if there's a major incident. So this will be, this will be one of the, aside from Richburg who's operating full-time, this will be the only other full-time operation for fire within our county. And I think it's, you know, given, you, you know how long it takes from here to get to Great Falls. It's a 37-minute drive. If, it's 17 miles, I believe, from Great Falls up to Richburg. But to drive that windy road drive, you're looking at about a 22-minute, you know, drive as well. And so we're greatly increasing the response times in the Great Falls area. We've, while we're on it, we've put EMS service out in the western part of the community, which Mr. Wilson referred to, and so did Mr. Darby. And our goal is to enhance the fire service in the western part of the community over the next year as well.
Thank you.
All right. We got it ready to go. To vote on this for resolution 2024-7, all in favor, raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous vote. Unanimous vote. Moving right along to number eight on the agenda, which, turn it back over to Mr. Hester again for the administrative report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let me try to make this as brief as possible. I did not have a lot, but there was a couple of items. Every two years, the county submits an RFQ to select a firm for our C fund, road and engineering construction projects and our, to meet our state requirements. A total, this, and we were up for our, our RFQs for our two years, we had a total of six firms that submitted for the civil engineering RFQ and five firms submitted for the construction RFQ. We had a committee that was put together of, of staff members, and I think there were six of us that sat on that committee, including myself. And out of that, out of those RFQs, we selected two of the, the two top firms, which were ICE, Infrastructure Consulting and Engineering, which we currently use on this year's projects and last year's projects, and actually were the previous two years as well. And then AMT, A Morton, Thomas and Associates. And we asked them both to come back and to give us a presentation. They were the two top firms. Our committee evaluated those two firms and we chose AMT to move forward with our C funds beginning in July. Now ICE Consulting will continue to finish the projects that they currently are under, which are our 2024 projects. And then AMT will come in and handle our 2025 projects. And so a little bit of information about them, they're very knowledgeable about C funds and have been involved with numerous other counties. They, they really, if you took the state of South Carolina and went across the top, what I call the top down to the coast and then down the coast, that's where they're really heavily in, including York Counties as well as Lancaster, Chesterfield, they're in Rock Hill. But they, they kind of litter the coast as well. Their inspection staff are out of our area and we felt they did a really good job on the inspection side after the works completed. And then they have some pavement management programs and some evaluation programs that we want to take advantage of. And our goal is to take a look at our roads in our county and give council a little bit more data behind the decisions that are made. For example, taking our roads, not only grading them out, but telling council how long the life expectancy on those roads are based on growth, based on future, you know, subdivisions or industrial activity. And to really give you all a little bit more information when we're selecting those roads. And then to create a roads plan over the next two, five, and 10 years to where, you know, maybe council decides that we want to invest some other capital funds into some of our roads based on some of the information. So we think it's, while ICE has done a tremendous job for us and we're very happy with them, again, they both did great presentations and our committee felt that AMT was, had the edge on them with regard to their construction management. And so we're going to give them a try. Moving on, I'm sure when everyone came in the building, you noticed all the stuff and I mentioned it at last council meeting, but we have got a lot of work in progress around here and we're trying to get it wrapped up before the end of the budget year, or at least the money spent before the end of the budget year, because we had allocated capital monies last year for the improvements in the Roddy Building. The carpet, the chairs that you see there are part of it. Don't look past the wall because we still have red carpet up here. We just haven't got to. We wanted to get at least this much done for everybody to see. We're replacing the, the carpet in the hallways with the plank and, or tile, I think they call it LVT, and the furniture around. There's going to be some painting on the exterior and some faded areas, landscaping. I promise we're going to put landscaping back where we ripped it out. But they've been working really hard. If you look out, we concreted this area. We have some nice tables and umbrellas and stuff for our employees to be able to enjoy. The outdoors, have their lunch. The kitchen's right on the backside. So a lot of them, furniture upgrade improvements to make the building look professional, to make it look welcoming, to make welcoming, I said that with two INGs on it. But I think our staff, Robert, his crew, I have to say Callie and Christie have really put their design touches on it when it comes to some of the carpet and color choices. This room will be painted. Again, we've got technology upgrades in the capital budget for next year as well. So our goal is to really spruce up and make this building something that people can be proud of in our community when people come in the doors. Not so happy to pay their taxes sometimes, Tommy. So, so that's what's going on. Don't think we've just let it go. And then for all the public and council, please remember Wednesday is Juneteenth holiday, which is recognized by Chester County Government. Our offices will be closed that day and it's holiday for all employees. And then last but not least, I just got a revised schedule on Rodman as far as, there's a meeting tomorrow to do a final spec review and it should, the bid, the bid should be advertised June 20th. So that will be, I believe June 20th is this week, Friday roughly, Thursday or Friday. So when I say that's the bid, the, and then there's a question deadline of July 16th, addendum deadline of July 18th, and then we open up to accept the bids July 25th. So there's a little bit of process of about a month here now that we're advertising the bid. But we are, again, we're, we're shooting for an August 1st of a recommendation for an award. So hopefully by the first meeting in August, we have got, we're shooting for that. We've got a bid award that we can recommend to council. And with that, Mr. Chairman, that is my administrator's report tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Hester.
One question for you. So will the recycling centers be closed on Wednesday?
I'm sorry?
The recycling centers, will they be closed?
No, they will not. Good question. And we revised the recycling center schedule. Most of those are part-time employees that aren't affected by the holiday and they would rather continue to work. And so we, we have online a posted recycling center holiday schedule. And realistically, Mr. Hall, I think we only shut it down about two days a year now. And that's at Thanksgiving and Christmas, we close for a day, I believe. But we will keep the recycle centers open Wednesday.
All righty. Thank you, Mr. Hester, for that report. And moving along to number nine on the agenda, old business, which is none. Number 10, new business is none. Boards and commissions, number 11 on the agenda is none. So moving along to number 12, executive session. We move, we'll need a motion to go in executive session to discuss matters relating to the purpose, proposed location, expansion, and provision for services encouraging locations or expansions of industry and other business in the area served by the public body, project number P 2373. And also under B is discussion for employment, appointment, compensation, promotion, discipline, or release of an employee, South Carolina Code 30-4-70A1, which will be handled by Mr. The County Administrator. I need a motion to go in executive session to discuss those matters.
I'll make a motion to go into executive session.
I need a second.
Second.
Got a second from Ms. Moseley. All in favor, raise your right hand and say aye.